Our first order of business is we need a liaison to the open space committee. Did we not do this the last time? What would, oh, no, the last one was the uh.
CPC.
CPC, okay, so who's our liaison now?
Uh, last time you elected not to have anybody. Um, but Tracy would very much like you to have a liaison.
Okay. Uh, any volunteers? Uh, I understand that their open space and rec plan is due for another update. When I, when I was on that committee, I got on that committee in what, two thousand nineteen? That was the last time it was updated. So it is due, so uh, there will be something of substance to do. So, any money want to volunteer? When do they meet?
Um, they, Tracy did tell me, but let me double check. So I figured you.
Twice a month.
They meet once a month, usually on a Tuesday.
Like I said, because, because they're redoing the open space plan. I guess it's somewhat important that we have somebody at the table while that's going on, so.
Yes.
Somebody?
And uh, excuse me, but in light of the fact that um, we're just discussing this for the right first time. Could we have a uh, distribution of the job responsibilities before we make a determination as to who might wish to take up that job?
I would presume the job responsibilities would be to attend the open space and rec meetings as well as helping out with the update to the plan. And then reporting back to this board if there is anything that needs to be reported back.
In two thousand, in two thousand nineteen, that was the main focus of all the meetings was updating the plan uh, for, for a period of months. You know. Otherwise, I suppose it's getting involved in the, um. It's getting involved, at least getting updates on what's going on at the beachwood playground and the Milliken tennis courts, but you know, there really isn't a lot of other things it substantively is doing. It may be called upon to make a recommendation, you know, about land purchase or something like that, but it's, it's. I can tell you it's not a lot of heavy lifting.
So it's still gonna be how many times a month for an hour to two hours?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanna put that on the table. People are stretched thin, myself is up there, okay? I'm not chomping at the bit to do it, I think it's important, but why can't they just report to us? When there's an action item or report to us, draft documents for us to review outside of their meeting times and report back to them accordingly.
That's your pleasure.
No, that's a question.
I, I move, I move that that's our recommendation, recommended action back to the open space committee. And if they have further information they wanna provide, put it in a handout and get it in front of us.
We, the, the liaison position, as I understand, has been filled for years up until last year, and we decided not to do that. Again, maybe in other years it is not important. I think when they're updating the plan, it is important to have somebody sitting at the table.
That's it, it's sitting at the table. Is it gonna be in person? Is it gonna be remote? How often? Is it gonna be special outside of once a month? I mean, I, can we get some additional detail on this? Clark, maybe you'd like to do it. I mean, it, we're all cringing at this. It just doesn't, it doesn't lend itself.
No, no, I, I don't wanna do it. I've been on the open space committee and, you know, I, I think I did the application and got the grants set up for the last uh, last update. But um, no, I've, I've got less time than all you guys.
I, I don't dismiss that.
Alright.
I didn't even think I was gonna be at this meeting.
Cassandra, uh, send me the uh, uh, email for the chair, whoever the chair is now. I know it's not Peter anymore, um, and let me talk to whoever the chair is and figure this out.
Okay, I will uh, work with Tracy to get that for you.
Alright, appreciate it.
Excuse me, I'd like just to make a comment on this issue, which is Tom, what you, this is what I would feel. Cassandra is the planner, that's part of her job to help us be a functional committee. If you turn it over to her and she goes and negotiates what the situation is, that's one less task you have to do, which is already a very full plate.
Amy, I'm only doing it because you're all making it a mountain out of a molehill, so I'll, I'll talk to the chair. It's gonna take five minutes to exchange an email with the chair and find out what they're up to, what their schedule is for redoing the plan. And I'll find that out. I don't have a problem doing, okay? Let's just move on with the agenda, please. Alright, next we have MAPC who's going to present to us the final version of their update of bylaw, the floodplain protection bylaw. Um, as you all know, they were, we received a grant to have MAPC do this for us. They, you know, we are required to comply with the state's new model bylaw on this subject. In a preliminary meeting, late spring. Our current bylaw is not far off from the models, so there isn't a lot of uh, major renovation that has to be done here, but. The final product, so we can get it ready for the morning and the fall, so turn it over to uh, MAPC. Who wants to start and introduce your team, please?
Hi, uh, good evening. Thanks for having us here. Uh, my name is Rodoshi Sinha, um, and I'm an environmental planner at M A B C. Um, is this? Okay, great. Um, my name is Rodoshi Sinha and I'm an environmental planner at M A B C, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And I'm just going to pull up my screen, but in the meantime, I'm just going to pass it to my colleague Avanti to introduce herself.
You're muted.
You, you would think I'd stop making that mistake. My name is Avanti. I am a senior regional land use planner with MAPC. Really excited to join this conversation today. And I'll also just mention that we're joined by our land use director at MAPC, Mark Rassicott. He's just going to be listening in on the presentation. He's been kind of advising us throughout this process and we're really happy to have him here as well.
Back to you, Rodoshi. Thanks, Avanti. Uh, and please let me know if my voice is a little scratchy. I'm just navigating between two networks. Um, so uh, thank you, like I said, thank you for having us here. Uh, we'll talk about uh, the Cohasset floodplain bylaw update that we've been doing. Um, and on the agenda, we have really quickly a quick project context and the project process of what we did and what we're going to do um, after this meeting. And overview of the uh, changes that we made, the timeline and the deliverables. And then we'll uh, have some questions and discussions as needed. Um, and this should be pretty quick, big, because the bylaws in good shape and we were very, very pleased with the way it was for Cohasset. So um, I'm going to pass it to Cassandra really quickly, if uh, you can give us a quick um, overview of why we're here. Cassandra?
Sure, yeah. Um, so in you know, going through all of the bylaws, we wanted to make sure that we were amending anything that we could and get this up to date with the state's standards. Um, so I worked with Tom and some other folks to apply for a grant through E A for their community planning assistance grant. We were awarded um, funding to specifically look at this bylaw and get it up to, again, the state's standards.
Excellent. Um, so yes, our uh, job here was to mainly focus on ensuring that the language in the floodplain and watershed protection district bylaw, chapter three hundred, article nine, section four of the zoning code is compliant with the Massachusetts model floodplain bylaws. Um, the twenty twenty state model is the model that we were following. This is a document that has been prepared for all the Massachusetts communities with the model bylaw language. And this is specific language that communities must incorporate into their local bylaws to be considered compliant with the national flood insurance program, which is N F I P. And this is a, the twenty twenty model is an update from the twenty twelve model. And the reason why it's so important and why it's so uh, crucial for a community like Cohasset, which is coastal, to have this in place is because without the N F I P participation, the town residents cannot purchase flood insurance, which is very important. Uh, and the community's flood hazard areas would not be eligible for certain grants and disaster assistance. So our job is to make it um, all set in place so that the community is eligible for those grants and funding. So what we did is we used a template, as you can see here, where we laid the Cohasset's bylaws with the twenty twenty model and we looked at it piece by piece to see how and where the language had changed. And if you can see that little compliance meter on the side uh, at the bottom right, Cohasset was in very good place uh, compared to a lot of other communities at like seventy percent compliant already, so we were you know, doing very well on that already. And our job was to come in and make it a hundred percent so that it's uh, eligible for the N F I P related grants. Um, and we use the color coding that's provided here to look at the document piece by piece. Uh, green for existing maintain, so we didn't touch that at all. Um, and the most of the work that we did was for the yellow bits, which was uh, for the existing bylaws, which needed slight tweaks and revisions. So that's what we did. Um, and now we're just going to, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and do a quick run through of the draft bylaw and just go through the changes once. Avanti, over to you.
Great, let me share my screen. Alright, great. So, this is a document that Tom and Cassandra, I think, sent to us back in May. Uh, this is, initially, we had been looking at article nine, which was the floodplain watershed protection overlay district. Since then, now it's article nine, section four. And so this is the document we use to actually make edits and we'll go over the edits that are highlighted in red in this document. Like Rodoshi said, this was already pretty compliant. There are not many changes, so the changes I'm gonna go through, it's pretty dry. It's pretty technical. It's not actually substantially changing the meaning too much, but it is important just for state compliance to make sure that we're aligned with the state requirements and what they want to see. So, um, and also feel free to just stop me if you have any questions as I'm talking. Uh, looking at section B, which is just talking about um, you know, the flood insurance rate map for Norfolk County and the location um, of this bylaw within the zoning. There were only like three things in red here that, again, very minorly changed. When we're talking about uh, the special flood hazard areas within the town of Cohasset that are designated on the flood insurance rate map, we just added references to the uh, flood zones A nine nine and zone Z as well, as it's written in the state language. Um, when talking about the exact boundaries of the district and how those might be defined, instead of going off of one here base flood elevation, we just changed one hundred year to one percent chance base flood elevation. One hundred year versus one percent chance does mean the same thing. They both mean an annual cha- an annual one percent chance of flooding. And this last sentence that we only slightly changed here was that the firm and the FIS reports are incorporated by reference and are on file with the town clerk, the planning board, the building inspector. And in addition to the select board, we just also added the conservation commission. The next section I'm gonna scroll through, because again, all of this that um, we're talking about like special permits, the lottery grants, all of that was compliant. When we get to uh, section L on the general provisions, there were only a few things that we changed here. Uh, let me scroll. This item, line item number four, is just talking about encroachments that will be prohibited um, in the, in the regulatory floodways. And the only like really thing that changed of substance here was that when talking about encroachments um, or why an encroachment might not be prohibited. In the original language, it said, if there was a certification by a registered professional engineer that is provided by the applicant for a special permit, demonstrating that such encroachment shall not result in an increase of flood levels during the occurrence of the one hundred year flood. We just changed that, basically, instead of saying uh, registered by professional engineer, the state wanted more specifically to point out hydraulic or hydrologic analyses. So instead, we say that the encroachments are prohibited unless it has been demonstrated through hydrologic or hydraulic analyses performed in accordance with standard engineering practice. So again, pretty technical, not think too crazy, just asking for more specific engineering analyses. Um, section six, seven, and eight are again just adjusting the language to what the state wants to see. So in line item six, we added a reference to zone A H in addition to zone A O regarding adequate drainage paths. Um, regarding the alteration of sand dunes, we just generalized that instead of within zone E, zone V E, we just say generally alteration of sand dunes, which would increase potential flood damage are prohibited. Um, in line item number eight, we just changed that, instead of just talking about all subdivision proposals, we say all subdivision, subdivision proposals and development proposals that are in the floodplain overlay district. Same thing in line item number ten, just adding that reference to zones A one through A thirty. With regards to uh, water courses that have not had a regulatory floodway, floodway designated regarding the best data that's available for them. In section M, we just changed from floodplain district. We just took the title of what this district is actually called, which is the floodplain and watershed protection overlay district. Just specifying that and using that consistent title throughout is important, so we want to make sure that was there. And we said the section shall take, this section shall take precedence over any less restrictive conflicting local laws, ordinance, or codes. Section two is regarding the rec, sorry, section two. This part Q is the requirement to submit new technical data. Um, we said, instead of saying the town will use its best efforts to notify FEMA of changes, we just got rid of that phrase, use its best efforts, and just said it will within six months notify FEMA. And there was just a title and title change for one of the addresses that we edited here. This is to the building code floodplain standards. Um, looking at, you know, uh, the determination to failure, the determination that failure to grant the variance would result in exceptional hardship to the applicant. Um, or a determination that the granting of a variance will not result in increased flood heights, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, create nuisance, or we added cost fraud on or victimization of the public. And that same phrase, we also just incorporated here in item S. That's the bylaw language. Another part of this is looking at definitions that aren't already found in the state building code. All of the definition languages were perfectly compliant with what the state already has, so there wasn't any changes here. Except for the last definition, which is only instead of saying article sixty point three and then listing out all of these different subsections, the state just got rid of that part. But that is it. Again, it was a little dry. I know those are really technical and are not too substantial, but that's a good sign for Cohasset, because it means you guys are actually ahead of a lot of other communities in complying with the state. Uh, Amy, I see your hand is raised.
Um, thank you. Uh, so thank you very much for doing this work. I guess what I'm trying to figure out, because I've never dealt with the presentation of this information before, is that this is a document that is communicating to us what we're supposed to do. Not that it's been validated that we've done it. Is that correct?
Um, yes, th- this is a, this is specifying edits to zoning language on what should be incorporated that you don't currently have in the language.
So by default, does that mean that we do not have that, these individual practices or actions?
No, not necessarily.
But what we meant, but evident in our own practices now? Are these just things that we already have done and we're codifying them? Because we know we've done them. It's a two diff- it's a completely different situation. One is you're telling us what we need to write down to let people know what it is we're supposed to do. Or we already do this and this is our regulation.
This is really about like, oh, s- sorry, was somebody gonna say something?
Well, I was. This is simply to get a bylaw in compliance with state law, period.
Yeah.
That's what it's doing, period.
Yes, but, but I'm asking.
You can count on one hand how many times we've used this bylaw in the last twenty years.
Well, I know, but what I'm asking is something further, which is these are things that we didn't have in our bylaw, but are we doing them anyway? Are these things that we are going to be responsible for doing and therefore need to create measures that uh, determine that we have accomplished these, cha- these, what these items mean?
I, I don't know what you're asking. These are small.
Bylaw as we have now been told to change it, or?
Relatively minor changes. Well, these are relatively minor changes. Housekeeping most, mostly, because we, our bylaw was in pretty good shape and complying with the state model.
Do we, do we monitor that?
What do you mean monitor it? We haven't used this bylaw in my memory.
Well, um, so that is even a bigger uh, kind of breach. If you, if you ask me, if we've never used it, doesn't mean it doesn't exist or should be used. It means that A, we didn't have to use it, or B, we haven't used it because we haven't had the resources to actually implement it correctly.
Yeah, just, just a quick uh, comment. Z B A reviews anything in the floodplain. Uh, they use this uh, every meeting that they have to, to review projects that are in floodplains. Um, uh, a- any, anybody doing a, a project in a floodplain would use these regulations in it, in addition to the building code and uh, FEMA requirements to design their project.
Okay, but wait a minute, Tom, it's not the answer to my question. My question is, do we have evidence that we actually practice this particular set of contingencies related to the bylaw?
I don't know if it would help to answer your question, Amy, but as Clark said, the zoning board does utilize this bylaw a lot. Um, they see a lot of applications that are within the floodplain and that is typically reflected in their decisions that are relevant to this bylaw.
Okay, but that ma- but that also means that we don't have a feedback mechanism to know whether or not these actually are implemented. They, we have a separate board that has responsibility for essentially um, activating the responsibility of this bylaw, but we as the planning board, I mean, the comment that we have something we have to a- agree to, but we haven't applied it, that seems like an odd situation.
Item that like you're thinking about, cause when I was going through, like, an example maybe you can give?
Well, I mean, so for exa- yes, so we have a couple of neighborhoods that have a physical features that produce problems that have downstream effects. So we have a potential hanging aquifer above a neighborhood. And when the, when we have that massive rain, that actually fills up and it kind of works its way down uh, into the properties below it. It has a consequence in that the people's basements get filled up, people's yards get full of gravel and a whole bunch of other things. Now, y- you may say that that's not the floodplain, a- and that, that's an argument that you could, that can be made. But I'm just trying to figure out whether or not are we monitoring our role in these issues? Should they actually have a relationship to us?
Yeah, I think, again, we've only been focused on like kind of this technical zoning language. I think the question you're asking is getting at a bigger issue that I don't think we as MAPC within the scope of this project addressed. I think I would defer to the town on like if there are things beyond like what we're talking about with these requirements that are like, oh, like actually monitoring if we're actually using this and, you know, are we evaluating data or development that's coming out of this district? That's something that goes above and beyond the scope of this, but that, that you and the town could like discuss later. We're very focused. Sorry.
So I, I appreciate what you're saying now. It's basically something that's a edict and it may or may not have any practical significance or implementation related to us at this point. I would act, you ask you to ask the leadership of MAPC if we have something like this that has significant consequences. And yet we're not at all involved in it. We're just putting it in the book because that says we have said the statements. I think that it is a responsibility of the town to be paying attention to the interactions between water distribution, land use, and consequences. And it's not, it's not a critique, it's just simply, it seems like, you know, we could have just gone over to the, to the uh, um, zoning board and, and asked them, hey, do we look like we conform to what you guys see, seem to do? And that doesn't, that doesn't seem like a very deliberate policy process. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying. I think for us at MAPC, in our contract, we were very focused on state compliance, because as Rodoshi mentioned earlier, if even just like on a technical level, even though these changes were like pretty minor, those changes are still important for complying with the national flood insurance program, which gives flood insurance to residents. So I think we were thinking about this in terms of making sure at least these changes pass through the town, the fall town vote. And then kind of going above and beyond. And by the way, the language that already exists in the Cohasset uh, bylaw is actually already relatively progressive compared to other towns. They do, they, there are items that go above and beyond just what the state is requiring. If you wanted to have a deeper conversation on, you know, well, we could be doing more beyond just the state compliance. MAPC wasn't scoped out to do that part. We were just scoped out. Our contract was just to focus on the compliance, to make sure that's taken care of, so that you're participating within the national flood insurance. Anything beyond that is something that we could talk about for a future MAPC project, but that wasn't technically in our contract. With that being said, we actually did have a conversation with Tom and Cassandra about potentially doing some best practices research. And Rodoshi and I are gonna work on a one pager with potential zoning language that you might want to include, that goes above and beyond what the state is saying. But we didn't wanna get too in the weeds of that, because we didn't want that to deter what needs to absolutely be voted on for a fall town meeting.
Okay, so that's a really great answer. And if any one of us on, on the planning board would be asked about whether or not the strength of these conditions are suffice such that somebody that had a problem couldn't come back to us and say, well, just because it wasn't in the book you wrote, doesn't mean that it wasn't a consequence that you could have anticipated. So that was a good answer. Because we, you know, ultimately, when you have serious flooding experiences, and I have some understanding of what's happened in the Louisiana and, and Gulf Coast region, people were turned around after things have happened and they've been sued even if it wasn't in the book. So, you know, we, it's just because we wrote it down, doesn't mean it's sufficient. What it means is we've established this as a norm. The question then becomes, in the future, do we wanna have more informed norms, given that we know climate is changing?
And that's fair, that's totally fair. I see what you're saying. Are there any other questions or concerns before we go to the next part of the presentation?
I just want to inquire about the change you made, the you replaced at the beginning of the document, the 100-year floodplain terminology with 1%.
Yeah.
So was that done throughout the whole document?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no more references to 100-year floodplain. What about the 500-year references? Have those been replaced with the equivalent percentage?
And this particular language that we're looking at, we didn't actually see any references to 500-year. It might be in like the firm maps, but I, in this, this word document, there weren't any references to that.
Okay. That's, I didn't have any other question. I saw a previous version of this that had, wasn't consistent. And so just as long as it's consistent throughout the document, it sounds like that's what was done. Thank you.
And consistency is really important and we'll double check before we send this to the state to make sure it's consistent.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Is there anything else? We have some other hearings we need to get to, so I have to.
Yes, we were going to Avanti, we all said on your side, I'm just going to.
I I.
Yeah.
Again, this isn't, we're not altering the flood zone, the the district. This is just, to me, just very technical changes to the bylaw, housekeeping changes. If it's done, it's done. You're going to send it to the state for pre-review, please do. Send it to our town council who's here, Carolyn Murray, so she can review it and we just need to be done with it. I don't know, I don't know if anything else you want to tell us is necessarily relevant to just, you know, making relatively small edits to a bylaw.
Yeah, we can, since we're kind of crunch for time, Redoshi, instead of going over this, we just have one question to actually ask you guys, which is that part of the part of the scope for this work was to have some kind of public forum or like educational session about this. This is back when we thought the changes to the bylaw might be substantial or major. Given that these changes are so small, Tom or Cassandra or anyone else, we were just curious what your opinions would be on, you know, how we incorporate this into a public forum? If we should at all.
Well, no, our our plan is, you know, this is the last phase of our zoning bylaw reform. We're going to have about seven, eight articles. Like we did last spring, we're going to do a single forum that goes over all of them. We'll invite you and if you need, you know, if somebody has a question, you'll be there to answer a question. But again, this one isn't rocket science, so I don't, certainly don't want to, don't see the need for a single specialized forum just on this bylaw. So we'll probably be doing that sometime in, I guess, in October, we're going to be doing our section five hearings in October.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, so the the timeframe is right now is, you know, we'll see that this gets to our town council who has any comments on it. And if you're going to have the state do a pre-review, obviously, we'd like that pre-review to be done and any changes made before we have our section five hearing, which will be sometime in October. So, you know, th- this should be ready to go no later than the end of September.
Agreed, and so we are going to send this to the state, we'll have them review this. Hopefully, that review will be wrapped up quickly. And then before October, and once the state reviews, then we'll send this draft to all of you so that, you know, we can go into the select board and planning board meetings and then have that public forum. Since you guys are crunching time for time, I think we can end here unless there are any other questions or concerns.
Anyone? Thank you very much for coming tonight and presenting this and doing this work for us. It's been great working with you on it, so we'll look forward to see if the state has anything to say. We'll go from there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us, have a good evening.
Amy, you were, I think what you're thinking about some of the other impacts of water runoff, you know, is A, whether this district needs to be expanded at some point, that's a whole different scientific, technical thing. Or do we need a bylaw to deal with other types of runoff that's not in the floodplain? And that's, again, it's a different topic than than these amendments. You know, and then that, you know, I don't, I don't, Cassandra, you know, Coastal Zone Management was doing something on climate resiliency in the harbor. Are they actually, in the scope of their study, are they looking at where there are bylaws? You know, the boundaries of the floodplain district are adequate or need to be expanded?
Not sure if they were looking at that, but.
That would be, that would be a question, that study is probably more relevant to that issue and might be a good question to ask them if they're, that's in the scope of their work.
I think they were mostly just looking at the areas that were pre-existing. I don't think that they were considering expanding that area.
Okay, well, maybe that's something we might think about is for another grant type thing is seeking an analysis about, you know, the future, do we need to expand our floodplain bylaw, or, you know, the the district itself and and the protections that go with it?
Sure.
Okay, so next we have a public hearing for a large home review for Nine Linden Circle. Is there a notice to read, Cassandra?
There is a notice to read, but I did just want to make note because there, I think there are a few people in the audience that are here for your other application. That, the application for 82 Border Street has requested a continuance to September 18th. So I didn't know if you wanted to kind of flip-flop the agenda and do that that way, those who are in the audience for just the 82 Border Street could.
Should we open the public hearing, Carolyn, or just continue it?
I would suggest you open the public hearing and then vote to grant the continuance.
Okay, all right, then why don't we do that? We'll we'll advance the site plan review for 82 Border Street. Carol, I mean Cassandra, if you wouldn't mind reading the public hearing notice and we'll open the hearing.
Yes, I can do that.
And and wherever, if anyone in the public has something to say, hearing that it's going to be, there's a request for a continuance, just raise your hand and we'll promote you to answer your question. Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. Pursuant to MGL chapter 40 dash A and section 312 dash, sorry, 12.7 of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform, webinar ID 872-5273-4522, passcode 085686 on Wednesday, August 14th, 2024 at 6:30 PM for a site plan review for property being shown on Cohasset Assessor's Maps F6-33-070 82 Border Street, Cohasset, Massachusetts 02025. The application is for site plan review for redevelopment of the former Mill River Marine Boatyard. The application is submitted by Co-Lobster LLC of 844 Alton Road, Suite 3, Miami Beach, Florida 33139. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, 41 Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM and Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting CohassetMA.org/activePBapplications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated.
We have anybody here from the applicant or was this a mail request?
It was a mailed request from Attorney Brodsky.
All right, does anybody in the public have any questions before we take a vote on the continuance?
No one is raising their hand.
No, okay. All right, so could somebody make a motion to continue it on the date requested at 6:30?
Motion to continue to September 18th?
At 6:30 PM.
Second.
All right, it's non-discussion, all in favor, alphabetical roll call.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye. Amy?
Amy voiced it, but she was muted.
Amy, you're muted.
Sorry about that, yes, aye.
Evan Heine, aye.
Kevix McBeish, aye.
All right, so everyone will be back here on September 18th. As Cassandra pointed out, the plans are available on the town website under the planning board page and their active applications. You can also physically go up and see them at town hall. We'll see everybody on the 18th. We schedule everything for 6:30, can't promise it'll start exactly at 6:30, but we will deal with it that evening. Thank you. All right, then back to Nine Linden Circle.
Sure.
We have a notice to read for that, if you could do that.
We do. Pursuant to MGL chapter 40 dash A and section 300 dash 5.5 of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform, webinar ID 872-5273-4522, passcode 085686 on Wednesday, August 14th, 2024 at 6:30 PM for a large house plan review for property being shown on Cohasset Assessor Maps C2-10-079 Nine Linden Circle, Cohasset, Mass. 02025. The application is for a large house plan review for renovation and addition to a single-family home for a new total residential gross floor area of 5,288 square feet. The application is submitted by Nicole and Robert Johnson of Nine Linden Circle, Cohasset, Mass. 02025. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, 41 Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM and Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting CohassetMA.org/activePBapplications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated.
Thank you. All right, do we have someone here for the applicant?
Yes, this is John Teriaki, Teriaki Architectural Design. I'm not sure, Cassandra, if the owners, Rob and Nicole Johnson or Jeff Hassett are in the audience.
Jeff is not here that I can see, but if he shows up, I will pull him in. Rob is being pulled in now.
Okay, that's great. I'm going to share my screen to briefly give you an overview of the project and we can take questions afterwards. So Nine Linden Circle, also known as 27 Linden Circle in some references, but the official assessor's address for this parcel is nine. I'm just going to switch back to an aerial map just to help locate the property. So this is Linden Drive, which comes off of Jerusalem Road, north side of our page. And then does a big loop and Linden Circle is a cul-de-sac street that comes off of Linden Drive. And Nine Linden Circle is located, the second house in that branch off of Linden Drive. And the project essentially consists of some additions to the existing house. And I'm just going to briefly go over the site plan. And this project did receive a stormwater permit in the July hearing by Conservation Commission, which we had noted in our narrative. So the the site and stormwater issues have been addressed as part of that hearing. But I will kind of briefly navigate through some of the changes that we're proposing. The light gray outline is the existing house, and this is Linden Circle here. We are proposing to add two architectural additions, a garage behind this wing of the house and a small kitchen expansion here. And then we have some upper level additions, which I will go through in the architectural drawings. The existing driveway will be extended as a pervious driveway to access the new garage with a small turnaround area. There will be a wraparound deck, pervious deck around the addition. And a pool and surrounding pervious patio are also proposed as part of the project. And these hardscape elements have been discussed as part of the stormwater hearing. But if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to go over those elements as well. And just to go into the, just to switch to the architectural drawings real quick, the existing house is 4,263 square feet. So it's already a house that's over the limit of large home review. We are adding about 1,025 square feet to that, which is why we are in front of you tonight. Just to give you a brief layout of the existing floor plan, so now Linden Circle is actually on the on the bottom of our plan. This is the existing covered porch, and I'm just going to compare this briefly to the proposed first floor plan with the dash lines, the hatched areas indicating the additions we're proposing, the garage addition. Again, located off of the side driveway so that it's not really visible from the street. Expansion of the kitchen towards the back. And upstairs, we are proposing basically a storage loft-type space above the garage, access from a separate stairway. We are proposing to connect the two second-floor masses of the house with an extension here, which I will show in the elevations. And lastly, we are proposing to create a finished attic space with dormers on both sides to create a joint bedroom space up there on the third level. So these are the proposed architectural elevations, and if I quickly contrast this to the existing, you will see that the existing house is also a two-story house with different colonial gable roof elements. Basically, we are adding that third floor above the centerpiece of that two-story mass. And we're adding our connector here. So just to go back to the proposed, here is a portion of the house, the center house that's extended vertically, which gives us that Nantucket Dormer third floor space, but it also creates a little bit more of a hierarchy where this centerpiece is clearly the tallest and central element. And then these wings are coming off of that central piece. So architecturally, we think that it serves two purposes. So I was wrapped around the side of the house, so this is the north facade, and this is the east facade along the driveway. Is where we have our new garage and simple gable roof line with shed dormers. And wrapping around, here is the backside of our attic addition with a shed roof dormer. All of this is primarily existing massing that we're leaving, and here is the the back of our garage addition. So that in summary is the architectural and site modifications proposed. The building height, we are at 30 feet, 30.7 feet to the top of this ridge. So we are well under the limit. The existing house was about 23 feet, so we're increasing that by about seven feet, the ridge line. Otherwise, we are in conformance with zoning. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'll start, what what's the square footage of the footprint before and after?
The footprint, I'm just going to go to the site plan because we have our square footage only includes the RGFA finished square feet area. Yeah, I think in the site plan to summarize us 3,256 square feet existing impervious area consisting of roofs, anything with a roof on the site plan, and they'll propose this 4,126.
You would say that equates to the footprint of the house as well?
The house and any attached structure with a roof over it. So that would include porches and house.
And this, this, with the the footprint, you know, currently we have a footprint measurement and this is five and a half feet short of being in non-compliance with the bylaws 20% lot coverage.
We have the lot coverage broken down here. So the building lot coverage is 20%, and we are at 15.8%.
A lot closer than that. 20%, the lot is 20,656. Twenty percent, the, the lot is twenty thousand six fifty-six according to the assessors' records, I just looked at it. Twenty percent of that is forty-one thirty-one, so.
I apologize, correct.
You're proposing forty-one twenty-six as a footprint, so it's pretty close.
Correct.
And um. The board's edification under proposed F A R, this would be double. What would be allowed under F A R. This is one of those houses that's closer to our existing extremes of our limit, rather than closer to the average. Relatively small lot for the house in the south, but. Current bylaw is what it is, so. I don't have anything else, so if anybody else wants to jump in, we're right ahead.
I'd like to uh, ask, can you give us a sense of the, a, a couple of things? Um, just for the purposes of being thorough. One, is there any land alteration? Two, what has changed, if anything, about setbacks? Three, have you discussed the change in the residential structure based on the neighbors? Four, is there any excessive additional uh, runoff that is likely to be projected based on? Um, what is existing at this point? Uh, another item is the road disturbance with the in- introduction of additional heavy equipment. And um, uh, serious usage of the uh, road area surrounding the house. Um, and, and you did answer the comment about whether there was per- pervious or impervious change. So I know that's a lot of things, but alter, land alterations, setbacks, neighbors, runoff. And uh, road deterioration as a result of the implementation of the project.
Uh, by land alteration. It's only alteration required to accomplish the project, so obviously the pool would have to be excavated. Foundations for the addition would have to be excavated, so.
Is there any exposed ledge on the site?
I don't believe so. I don't believe any is shown on the site plan. Usually exposed ledge is marked as exposed ledge on the site plan. And again, based on the Morse Engineering Survey, I don't see any exposed ledge. Being, or, or any exposed ledge in the way of the project. And when it comes to the setbacks, we are conforming with the setbacks. We are not changing the front setback. We are in compliance already on the side, and the garage more than complies, because twenty-four point two is the existing. And requirement is twenty feet. Uh, when it comes to the question on the construction equipment, you know, I'm not qualified to. Comment on how residential construction and Cohasset impacts the streets, that's probably a bigger issue. But obviously, if there's residential construction. There will be trucks required to make that happen, so I'm not sure. I don't think this project is beyond any. Typical project that adds a pool or an addition to a house, so I'm not sure how to answer that question. The runoff, again, the, the numbers are summarized on the site plan, and they were reviewed by the Conservation Commission. The project was granted a stormwater permit. Existing impervious areas, five thousand seventy-six, proposed as sixty-one ninety-six. And the stormwater permit was granted based on the recommendations made by Morse Engineering on the site plan. I'm not sure if that answered all the questions, or if I left anything out.
And what's the, have you looked at the size of the houses in the neighborhood nearby?
Yes, we provided a scale study on the application. And we picked the surrounding homes. Around and uh, summarized their lot area versus total square footage as listed by assessors. And you see that there are, there is a mixture of houses. Some smaller and some bigger, and some in the four thousands scattered across the neighborhood. And Linden Drive has been a very active neighborhood. With residential construction and expansion, so the houses there are in the process of being expanded continuously. That's just the pattern. So this certainly fits into that fabric, and again, the house is already over four thousand square feet. And the changes we're making. Are not increasing the square footage significantly, but are adding a garage and making changes where we really need them. For the uh, particular goals of this family.
What, what did you say the total impervious coverage was?
Um, existing impervious total is five thousand seventy-six, proposed impervious total is sixty-one ninety-six square feet.
It's right, it's right at the limit of thirty percent. This is, this is, this is why our footprint measures are no good. Outlive their usefulness. But it is the current bylaw. This is, this is at twenty-nine point nine nine six lot coverage of impervious material. Well, by law, limit is thirty.
Ken, if you could blow up this existing schematic that you have and point out and highlight where the um. Driveway is, that would, uh, and where, what, what circle where the um. Garage is located. I wanna get a fix as to where the garage is facing, whether it's facing the road, whether it's facing a neighbor. Um, and I'd like to hear some details as to how it would be illuminated. As well as other means of egress, uh, and entrance to the home. Porches, um. Patio areas, how those would be um, accessed and um, or, and lit.
Yeah, sure. So the existing driveway is shown with this light gray line, and it ends about here. And the darker line is the expansion of the driveway, the, the street is to our north here. And the garage doors are facing the side yard, so they're not facing the street. Um, so you'd be coming with the car, entering, maneuvering back and exiting the property. And then in terms of pedestrian patterns, there's an existing covered porch. We are proposing to uh, modify the corner of that covered porch, but the entrances essentially remain the same on the front. So here's a covered porch, there would be a formal entry. The second, both of these entries are existing. And as part of our garages and off the side, we're adding a, a secondary entry with a recessed porch off of that. So this will not really be visible from the street, this is really for day-to-day entrance as you pull a vehicle here. And then uh, in terms of the back of the house, you know, we have French doors. Leading out to this wraparound deck, a rear door from the mudroom and a rear door from the garage. So the light fixtures are noted on the architectural plan, if you um, see the uh, sconce. Type one, sconce type two, so we're proposing primarily sconces and recessed. Lighting for the covered porch on the front. Front porch, we're proposing uh, four recess lights and two sconces at this door. And at the garage, we're proposing um. Basically, three sconces flanking the doors. And at each exit door, we have at least one sconce, or one sconce at each. And then a double sconce, uh, where the uh, French doors are, and I'm just gonna switch to the elevations. To show some of those fixtures, again, that we, we submitted the, the cut sheets for these. They are kind of barn light or a fairly traditional New England type sconces with. Uh, normal lighting, I would say. So nothing excessive, or no uplights or floodlights are proposed. And here's a view of the sconce lighting at the French doors.
So the word determine sconce is pretty common these days. Can, can you talk about whether these are shielded lights and what directions they're facing, and whether they would actually pre. Uh, provide any uh, glare, be it to um. Um, you know, observers in, in the general vicinity. So they're. In, in an existing house, or, or even just in that neighborhood, um, you know, on foot.
They're shielded from the top, so um, they're downlights essentially. Uh, so they're, you know, they're, the intent is to. Not have them uh, fully exposed, the light fixture. So that most of the top would be concealed, just to minimize that, that additional glare.
Okay. And any uh, additional post or lantern lights um, along the driveway or walkways?
That's not currently proposed in the project. Uh, we feel that this level of lighting is adequate with the porch and the side of the house lit. So that's, that's all we have right now.
W- w- you mentioned with the side of the house lit, would it be lit at the entrances, or would it be illuminated by other?
At the end, at the entrances, what I meant, the uh, the recess light at this covered porch, and then the uh. The sconce lighting around the garage doors.
Okay, I, I just have one further question, um, with regard to the, the maximum height of the home, um. It, it's under the thirty-five foot that we have in our existing current limit. Um, what, what did you mention the height would be actually at that finished third floor level?
Uh, so it's thirty point seven feet to the ridge line, which is what we measure to now.
It, it just, do, do you know offhand how that um, uh, compares to homes that are butters, um, um, um. The sides of, of that, uh.
Um, if you go back to the scale study that I mentioned, uh, this house is certainly uh, pushing that limit. This house is probably higher. Uh, that's across the street, so that one is um, over here.
Got it.
And then uh, this gambrel here, for example, is probably at about the same height to the ridge. Uh, so there are some that are lower, for example, three Linden Circle. One of the, you know, an original, I would say, Linden neighborhood home.
Yeah.
It is clearly lower, but all of these homes are slowly changing and expanding. This house, uh, which is on the opposite side, over here. Uh, that's the, probably taller than thirty. So it's probably going to feel about average. And we try to keep only the central portion high, again, to create that hierarchy, we're not trying to create. Um, a box, or we're trying to make this house. Uh, break those massing, the masses with more gable lines and the Nantucket dormers. Just to help break it down, even though we're adding a bigger mass here. We're trying to limit that to the central portion of the house.
Yeah, you know, I just, I, I'll just close with, I appreciate those efforts, but it still looks like a lot masked. Um, in the middle. And on the ends, and you know, in the middle, it just looks like a three, three-story home boxed in with. Two, the additions on both sides of it, when I'm looking at this schematic here.
Uh, these are existing, just to correct you.
Yeah.
The side, this, this is what exists now.
But it, it just, it, it, yeah, no, I, I get it, and I get it, you put in the addition on, on the center part, and massing, focusing the massing there, it just. You know, maybe it's just um, the corners, you know, and I'll just put it out there and leave with this, if. There's a way to make more subtle tapered edges, maybe even on those existing um, sides. Um. Uh, you know, when, when I'm talking about that, you have that roof line that goes right to the edge and then drops down. Um, if it only went something short of the edge and then tapered down. Um, it just may, yeah, like right over about where your cursor is up, up there. You know, on that end, and then over on the other corresponding edge, it just might not have that big mass feel. Um, and it may soften, literally soften some of the edges and some of the corners. Um, but you know, that's just my impression that I see from what you present here, and I appreciate your efforts, um. To fit it in with the neighborhood, fit it in with the community, and it, it is a changing neighborhood, as, as many of them are. And um, you know, doing that with thought as to the existing neighbors, um. The, the history of the neighborhood, and you know, where um, what makes sense for, for, for families in it, new and old, um, is appreciated. Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, can we go back to the um, lighting, particularly the candle downlit. Uh, structure, which is square? Not, no, the uh, the other lot, yeah, that one there. So I would say that that's going to shine directly out. To whatever is, is facing. And if, depending upon the light bulb that they use, it's gonna be bright. And so there's no shielding on that, the, the roof of that light does not shield the actual illumination. Right, I mean.
I think this type of light is meant to be used as a kind of a gentler. You know, you, you're not supposed to have a hundred watt light bulb in here, this is just more of a subtle. Very classic New England light fixture, a kind of a lantern. So it's probably a question of the uh, the wattage of the light bulb.
Right, which is not something that you can regulate at the outset, you can't really regulate that. That's why I'm saying, to me, that doesn't look like a uh, a um. New England light fixture, because it does have this little cap on the top, and then this whole body of the light itself. If it had more of a shielding of the light, just even enough to bounce off of two inches or one inch of the light. It'd be much less intrusive, and I say this because I live across about three hundred yards. And there are five lights on the house next to where I live, and I see those lights every night. And they actually completely illuminate my bedroom. So I don't, I can't feel confident that that, this is not going to have that same consequence. Um, the second issue is, which is one that I'm raising, maybe for the future, but certainly the one that has. The biggest cost consequence to groups of people living in neighborhoods. And that is the destruction of the interest, the road infrastructure, when you have a heavy truck taking out rocks. Bringing in equipment, and, and all that goes on with. Seriously altering the landscape, so if you're gonna build a swimming pool, you're gonna take out a lot of material. It's gonna come out in very heavy trucks, et cetera, and it would seem to me that, that um. It's important to start thinking about that as, as uh, all of us on the planning board, but also. Anybody that's planning to change um, the, the uh. Land around the residences that people live in, because the cost to fix the roads. And the consequence of the need to fix the roads has become um, unsustainable. And it's, and it's creating situations in which the, the roadbeds of most of these private ways. Are being destroyed, and then the question is who pays for them? Um. Oh, the last thing is, is, did you communicate, I, I presume that all the neighbors um, got notification. Of the change of foot, did you, was there any kind of group discussion about that? And, and, and maybe uh, asking the, the neighbors of concerns they might have?
I'll have to defer that to uh, Nicole and Rob Johnson.
So we've certainly discussed this with several of the neighbors, um, in particular, the neighbors who are um. On the, the driveway side, and I think a lot of the, the concerns about the lights. Those lights are actually gonna be shining into a fence in a shrubbed area. Um, and those neighbors in particular were, were quite, um, will you talk to them?
Well, I've known them since I was young, um, growing up here in the, the same home. Um, they were really happy for us.
Yeah, they didn't express any concerns.
Thank you.
Anything else? Um, we have one other attendee out there, anything, Mike Sardina, any questions? A couple of minutes, um if there's nothing else, I'll detain a motion.
Looks like a good, good project. I'll make a motion uh to approve without conditions.
Anybody could have seconded it? Hello?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, no.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Hine, no.
I'm sorry.
The beat, you get to vote on this.
Yep.
Bill Smith, aye.
Oh, it's approved by a three to two vote. Thank you for your time.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have some minutes to deal with Cassandra?
Yes, you do. You have, I believe, both of your July, but let me just confirm.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda back.
No, it's okay. Uh so July tenth and July twenty-fourth.
Okay, motion please to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
A second?
Second motion.
Okay, thank you, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Hine, aye.
Bill Smith, aye.
All right, the last thing, I just wanted to touch on zoning articles for a moment. Where we are, um so Carolyn's firm has looked at the wind and solar bylaws. She's just changed the format to the just really that we're going to cross out the things that are leaving and the, you know, and adding new things. So uh rather, you know, I had the changes and then had all the material that was moving to regulations at the end. So um, oh, I'm I'm sorry, I need to share the screen, don't I? Sorry about that, so. Um, sure, I'm sorry. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, um. So it is in, I'm sorry, can't see, can everybody see that? So this, this document is the two articles together. And so Carolyn has them in the correct format to go forward to town meeting. So I I'm going to share this one more time with the Alternative Energy Committee and this, these will be ready for uh our section five hearing. Uh the other thing that Carolyn reviewed, I'll just close this document. Why am I lost here tonight? I'm sorry, I'm like discombobulated tonight. Stop the share. Screen shared, this one. So I had Carolyn look at the oh, I'm sorry. Can anybody see that?
Not yet.
Damn it.
There it is.
Yeah, I'm kind of totally discombobulated tonight. So I had Carolyn look at the floor area ratio, even though we still need to discuss the numbers, but just for the format of the bylaw. Um she pointed out one thing about the changes to the footnotes for this article, um article five. And we just have to, just have to go back and make sure we have the right numbering of footnotes after the changes to article five that were done last fall. Uh but the other thing is that, you know, we had discussed that if we implement floor area ratio, we would allow a property to go over it by a certain percentage, by ten percent, under a special permit. So Carolyn's suggestion was that we should have some criteria for granting that special permit. What what reasons we would want to allow somebody to go over the floor area ratio? And by the way, just what I was saying about the previous application, um you know, the proposed floor area ratio for Residence B is point one two. Um that house at nine Linden Circle exceeds that now and it would be double that with this house uh under floor area ratio. And as I said, it it comes awfully close to both the primary structure coverage and the overall impervious coverage under our current bylaws. Um but I don't, we're not going to debate these tonight, but um make sure these are what Carolyn's changes are circulated to you in her comments so that we can discuss this further at our next meeting. And then late today, I gave you I gave you a, uh, see, here I am again. Share the screen, Tom.
Can I have one, one quick question before we move on?
Yep.
With floor area ratio, so when you say floor area ratio, is that, you know, kind of, um does that include, you know, kind of any existing ledges as well?
No.
Or cons or anything?
No, it's simply a measure of the structure, the the measuring the size of the building on the lot. And it's, it's the measuring the bulk of the building rather than just the footprint, which our current bylaw does. Um that's why I asked what the footprint coverages were in the last application versus the lot size, to try to make the building in some proportion to the lot size, so. If you want to Google, I I mean, I can get, I guess when we have our detailed discussion, I'll have it more technical definition of what floor area ratio is. We apply floor area ratio right now in the village, for example. And it decides what the size of the building and the units are going to be relative to the lot size. It's, it's designed to bring in some proportionality of the overall house size to the size of the lot. Today, we just measure a footprint of the building against the land area of the lot. Right now, that limit is twenty percent of the lot for the primary house, and this house would be just a hair under that. And then it has a thirty percent coverage for all impervious material, and this would be even a smaller here under that limit, under our current law.
Right.
So. Yeah, no, the ledge, it's not, not dealing with any of the land, other aspects of the land. So this thing, I I just circulated and I apologize, I've just been so flat out the last month, I haven't paid much attention to this stuff. But um, um, you know, after we, in our last meeting, we did get into some discussion of the amendment to the land alteration bylaw. And I looked back at the version that, well, it was a citizen's petition in two thousand seventeen, it's long, but failed by six votes to get two-thirds. And then in two thousand twenty-one, with the bylaw working group, we started with a version of that and it melded into what the current bylaw looks like. So what I have here in this document, and I've separated it out and I circulated, was the version I proposed in July at the amendments, and then attached to it at the bottom of it is another version. And I I got rid of all the references to the land, um to the accessory land classifications, which I think makes it overly complicated. Still, the proposal is to get rid of the exemption for eighteen thousand and under square foot lots, small lots. And to get rid of the exemption that applies to accessory structures. So that's, that's in the version two, but the version two is trying to be simpler. I saw that Amy gave me some edits, her geek gave us some sort of an outline of something simple. And I, I was trying to make it a little simpler in its flow, from one issue to the next. So take a look at it, uh the version two, compared to this version one. Um and you'll see what version one, what the edits are against the current bylaw. And again, we're just trying to get it to where we want it to be. We're still not going to be regulating blasting, you know, preventing it. We're not going to be regulating removal of underground ledge to build a house. But there are other things that, now that we see more and more lots that are engaged in blasting and ledge removal, that, you know, we want to make some tweaks. And I, again, I ask you all to think about the tweaks we should make, and I'm just throwing out, you know, a new version of that. Are we meeting on the twenty-eighth, Cassandra?
Yes, you do um have a meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Do we have a hearing?
You do not have a hearing, um unless you get an A and R in between now and then. Um but Heritage Lane, um I just got the report back from West End and Sampson today. From their review, they're looking for that lot release. Um so I did post to them earlier today. I haven't heard back of whether or not they would like to come before the board, either on the twenty-eighth or the fourth.
All right, well, so on the twenty-eighth, let's plan to discuss. I think we can quickly, I think the wind and solar ones are pretty much in shape. And I think really right now, I just want to get the feedback of the Alternative Energy Committee. Hopefully by the twenty-eighth, we have the final version of the floodplain thing. Let's plan to go over this land alteration proposed amendment and the FAR amendment. And Carolyn knows, the other one that Carolyn's firm is working on is the, the uh development impact bylaw. And I don't know, you know what the timeframe is? If you have something for the twenty-eighth, great. If you don't, that's okay. It'll be in September. The other thing about bylaws, by the way, is that, I don't know if any of you have heard, but the state legislature and I guess the governor has signed it. There's new legislation to try to increase affordable housing in the state that is altering how uh towns can regulate accessory dwelling units and basically making them more readily available. And as you know, we changed our bylaw last fall, twenty-three, fall twenty-three. And we um expanded the opportunity to develop ADUs as compared to our previous bylaw. So I've asked Carolyn, um so apparently from memo that Cassandra and Carolyn circulated today, we need to come into compliance by February of two thousand twenty-five, is that correct?
Correct.
State law, so you know, rather than, you know, that's in between two town meetings, I've asked Carolyn to make recommendations on a recently changed ADU bylaw, if it needs further changes and we can bring those back. Uh we can bring those forward in the fall as well. And that, you know, it'll be a relatively easy sell to the town insofar as, you know, yes, we're changing something we just changed, but we have to, you know, there's this new state legislation and we have to comply with it, so it would be a fairly easy explanation. Um I think the new legislation is doing a lot of the things we did to allow structures outside of the main structure now. So I'm I'm hoping that our new bylaw isn't too out of whack with what the state has just done. But that's, you know, the state is continuing to try to find ways to encourage the, you know, different types of housing stock and more affordable housing, so they they come up with this. Um and and if, again, Carolyn has something on that by the twenty-eighth grade, if not, we'll deal with that in September as well.
Okay.
All right, so um and then the only, I'm I'm trying to think of what else we, oh, yeah, the only other thing was the uh looking at our residential cluster bylaw and possible changes to frontage. And I, I, Clark, I'm going to ask you to help me with some of that. When I gather, when I gather some more thoughts and materials about that. Um I'm just, my my workload or whoever, whoever wants to help with it, I just, my workload is just, there there's things I've written in the past about the subject, but I you know, we we wanted to tie the cluster bylaw to any possible frontage changes. And then there's this low impact development bylaw that's out there, a model bylaw that I wanted to look at again, so try to get that to everybody, so. Regarding what we're doing with regulations, again, I've asked Carolyn, you know, tell me how we can implement, you know, a single volume of all the land use boards. I still think in the end of the day, each board is going to manage its own regulations and have to pass them. Uh particularly with this wind and solar, we are moving a lot of the material into regulations, the stuff that will change over time with technical requirements. I think from the timeframe, you know, we should, all the planning board regulations, we'll have a new set of them with this wind and solar changes with any other things compiled in a new format. And we'll do the public hearing on that, like fairly close to town meeting, having them in place, ready to go before town meeting. But we'll keep it towards near the end when we're fairly close. And and again, we'll do our section five hearing on all these things, probably again, given the volume, in two nights, and we'll do those in October. And sandwich in a public forum somewhere in between. Okay, anybody, so you have homework assignments, um and again, any suggested changes? I was the guilty party about treading the line of the open meeting law. Uh just give the changes one-on-one to me or to Carolyn. Carolyn, if you don't mind that, and um, you know, we'll, we'll incorporate those into our discussions. All right, so on the twenty-eighth, we will deal with land alteration of and floor area ratio primarily on and and.
Tom, can I ask a question about what you presented? I don't want to go into de- in infinite detail. I just, there was a point in it where you talked about topography. And then it was kind of, um, it was pointed out, topography, but then it wasn't really.
Yes.
I I don't know, can you just touch on that?
Yeah, yeah, so so when when land alteration was originally conceived, you know, in replacement of the old-fashioned earth removal bylaws, um we were going to regulate in three areas, clearing, grading, and then the actual removal of earth material and ledge material. Um as we got into the, the stormwater management bylaw came into effect. And that bylaw and the CONCON is dealing with a lot of these grading changes through that. So the approach I have taken with this amendment is to mention grading. The current bylaw does not, because we deferred totally to the stormwater bylaw. But even in this thing is to mention grading and to say we're going to defer to the stormwater bylaw, we're going to defer to the Conservation Commission's determination on grade changes. And if for some reason a project does not fall under the stormwater management bylaws purview, then we'll have a a standard for us to regulate, and I think it was a ten percent grade change. So I'm trying not to create more work for the planning board that's unnecessary if CONCON is already covering that area. So really, the main focus of land alteration as it is under the existing bylaw is to focus on lot clearing and to focus on earth removal and ledge removal.
Thank you, I I just thought that was interesting because on further reflection after our last meeting on rock and um, you know, what we have for remaining lots in town and their development of them. And I use that, if I, if I may use that, you know, the Atlantic bend in the road, you know, site right now over by Cunningham Bridge. I believe that's the name of the bridge that where Little Harbor exits into the Atlantic there. You know, that area is having sizable earth movement now and they're excavating what was a a small rise that went up into a hill there. And a lot of what we have left in this town with the topography is dictated by the rock beneath it. The reason it's there is because that's an area that's been resistant to weathering for eons, okay? And that's why there's a topographic high there, okay? But it may not be exposed as bedrock until you dig into it with some earth-moving equipment. And then you see it's got a a foot or or less of of soil on top of what is a a a ledge um with some a topographic feature that manifests itself as ledge where it's exposed to the earth and you see it, or just as a topographic rise where it's covered by earth. And um I, that's why I I thought that was interesting that that was mentioned in here and I I wanted you to just um provide some additional context on that.
That property is a perfect example of, you know, the limitations of this bylaw. I mean, the focus, even going back to the mid-two thousands when this was first, it was first discussed because somebody wanted to blast the driveway up the side of a exposed ledge on Beach Street, and that driveway is there today. It was somewhat of an abomination at the time, but uh the the focus had always been from the beginning more on the visual effects, because the ledge, the exposed ledge was a unique feature to Cohasset as compared to some of our more beachier neighbors. Um but there's other aspects of the top. Um but there's other aspects of the topography, you're right, than just seeing a bare rock. It could be a hill, it could be, you know, a number of things, and I just think that we need to um you know, if we want to expand it to something beyond just the exposed stuff, we have to just have that back up in the justification, and Carolyn will tell you if you go too too far of preventing uh the development of a lot. Um you know, then you get into a regulatory taking and the town has to end up paying for the property, so. I, you know, there's a famous Supreme Court case about that because they were trying to protect Beach in South Carolina. Um very admirable for them to do so, but yet it was considered a regulatory taking and the local government down there had to end up paying for that property and a lot of other properties, so. We, you know, it's a fine line, we have to walk between people's rights to develop their property and and what we want to try to protect, but um I'm open to all ideas and suggestions. You know, and we have Carolyn here to help us do it the right way. But I, you know, I've gone by that property and I just, I'm like appalled, and I'm wondering, did we miss a vote? Did we, you know, did we not do a land alteration pe- special permit? I I don't know. But part of it is because it's a large footprint of a house, and because we also currently exempt the removal of ledge from accessory structures as well, which this amendment would would change. So, anyway. Be ready to talk about that on the twenty eighth and um
Tom, I have a, I've had my hand up for
No, I'm sorry, I don't have, I I'm sorry, I gotta stop the share so I can see the screen, sorry.
Uh I started to read your development impact bylaw and
Don't, don't bother.
Well, no, no, no.
Carolyn's firm is gonna read the tool, the whole thing.
Okay, but but let me, let me just just say something, which is that it may not be apparent to Carolyn, Carolyn's uh firm that sixty percent of our infrastructure is private ways. And private ways were never built with the infrastructure integrity to A, last for a long time, and B, to be able to cope with the consequences of the impact of the remaining lot that we have in town. And as a result, it, I think, needs to be um deeply analyzed for the consequences down to the depth of the roadbeds of our private ways. So that it becomes apparent to a bylaw that it does have justification for what is currently private property, right? Uh our private ways are a joint ownership of all the residents on that private way, I presume. And so when somebody comes in and spends uh three years in one case and almost three years in two other cases, and then another year and a half or two years in another case to build a brand new structure for which they have not had any assessment on the cost of the impact. We have to think about how do we articulate a a solid explanation so that it is justified that there should be some kind of bond put up based on evidence. And we don't have the evidence now. All we have is the designation of private ways. So however, this is gonna be tackled, and it's not gonna be a trivial task. It's also not gonna be a cheap investigation, but that's the only way we're gonna be able to have legitimacy so that places beyond roads like mine and other roads and a- all along Jerusalem Road, all of the off roads um are gonna be in a situation where we could, w- w- we just are not gonna have the evidence that's necessary to make cases, and then a mechanism that makes sense. And and the mechanism may not be that individual households are charged. It may be something completely different. So we have to think about it from the perspective of not just the people on the road, but the long term consequences of the fact that sixty percent of our roads are private ways.
So, I mean, the the focus of this bylaw, as it is in the towns that I copied from, is the impact that's caused by large scale projects. And so for, you know, and tonight, in you've been focused on, you know, an individual house project. And um I, your point is well taken, that these private roads can get torn up during this process. And if somebody was to build a subdivision, I mean, I think at least in the draft I did, it would also include subdivisions. If somebody was to do a subdivision on your private road where there's gonna be multiple lots, yes, you're gonna have to deal with development impact fee and some mitigation because of what you might do to the road. If we start bringing it to the scale of that an individual homeowner for temporary, in quotes, you know, you say three years for some of these things, temporary construction project may impact the road. I just think politically, in getting something like that passed, is gonna be extremely difficult if we start assessing an individual, single family house construction for impacts, and I think we i- in the bylaw committee, we touched upon this a little bit. Um we were talking about even making a distinction for residency, because theoretically it has much bigger houses that might have a bigger impact on its surroundings, but uh I think it's gonna be very tough, Carolyn can jump in anytime, you know, to to bring a development impact regulation down to the individual house scale. It's not, in the few places that I've seen with these types of bylaws, it's not done that way. It's done to mitigate the big projects that will have sidewalk needs and and may be in a position to contribute to the the town's new road fund or the sidewalk fund, but and I don't think that's a problem, like, for example, we get one of these developments in the new MBTA district, and we get a hundred units of housing. I have no problem telling them that they should put a sidewalk on three A and should contribute to the road fund of the town. It it's a big project, that's part of the cost of doing business, but I would have a problem telling Nine Linden Circle they have to do that. And that's, therein lies the problem, and I don't know how far we can go with that, and and we would be setting new ground, I think, if we did that on that scale. Carolyn can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know any towns that do that, but uh but it is a problem, and and you know, our town road fund, I presume, is also gonna be used to help people with private ways and how are we going to fund it? Well, we're gonna fund it on the big projects with this new bylaw, but can we fund it? You know, most of our development, we all know, is individual, single family homes. Are we gonna find a way to fund you know, mitigation through single family home development? I don't know. I think that'd be a really, really tough sell to do, if assuming legally we could even do it.
Tom, uh you know, just to continue the discussion, Amy makes a good point, and certainly um if somebody's building a single family house in a in a a already established neighborhood, there there's damage from trucking and and heavy equipment, and some of it is due to carelessness. Uh and uh some of it's just oops, you know, just stuff just happens. But eh the the way the Mass General Law works and our general bylaw and the statement of understanding about private ways is, everybody kinda owns the repair. And it it seems, it seems like it it might make sense to um as a part of a building application for a single family house, to require an inventory of the the streets and roads, whether they're private or public around the construction. And and certainly, I I've I've gotten wind of uh developer or builder damage to public ways that they were caught and then asked to contribute or repair. Uh and and to me, that that seems reasonable, that that developers and builders who are careful. Well, th- they still might damage the roads, but but they're not always careful. Um you know, they're not always dropping plywood down on their metal skid steers, their five ton, twenty ton piece of equipment on pavement, and they're they're scarring up the asphalt, and it it is preventable, but it's not easy to do that. I think that perhaps somewhere in our bylaws, we should protect those existing homeowners from um excessive, excessive wear and tear on on private ways and public ways.
You're getting all this, Carolyn? I mean, you're gonna be, you're gonna be the, yeah, you're gonna be the author of this, and again.
Oh, you didn't tell me to listen, wait a minute.
No, 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 this is, this is good, because she needs to hear this in presenting this something that that, to try to meet our objectives. And again, when I go out to look, I see Hanover and I see Dedham, and yes, obviously, they're dealing with their large commercial projects on their big commercial roads. But we're a di- we're different, and Carolyn, what you're hearing is, our impacts are coming more or as the small projects, as they would be from the potential big projects that might come to us on three A in the future, so I don't know how, you know, that's why you were getting the big bucks here, and you you're gonna integrate all of this into something that works for us, and that passes legal muster at the same time.
Well, well, two things I just wanna say is that the research I have done so far, by and large, does not apply to residential development. And it, and more often than not, it specifically exempts residential development, particularly of a certain scale, subdivision or a large subdivision or a certain number of units would be different, but by and large you don't see residential development impact. The other thing about requiring a bond or uh something, some kind of contribution towards um private roads. What do we do with that? Because this is not a subdivision, eh I mean, if we're dealing with a subdivision, that's one thing, the subdivision statute says we have to require a bond so that the developer walks away and doesn't complete the infrastructure roadway. You don't have a bunch of people who've bought lots that are landlocked, or that they don't have water and sewer capable of being connected to those lots. So we've got a special, you know, statutory provision that allows us to require um a, you know, surety to make sure that those roads and infrastructure get built. We don't have any authority, though, as a town to go in, even if we collected money, or even if we required a bond relative to private roads. We don't have any authority to do anything with that money. You know, we can't go on to be, onto the private property and start saying, well, you know, this is the next road that's on our list of roads to be repaired this year. Um so there's, you know, I wanna, I want us to think practically in terms of yes, y- you know, these all are great ideas and ways to protect existing homeowners. But the Town Cohasset Planning Board is not in the business of fundraising for, insert your name of your local he- home association, so you know, their fund, uh their capital improvement fund. We've got to be careful about that.
Well, I mean, we voted for for public ways, we voted for public ways, and certainly the town does go on to into private ways and and affect repairs uh and upgrades.
On private ways that have been degraded as a result of any, any uh process, but in particular, on the basis of construction, the town is required to fill the potholes. Now, I can tell you that the town is not functionally capable of making a good a pothole fill. So they'll come down one day, they'll put some blacktop on it, pound it in a little bit, and then go away and it's gone in a day. It's completely gone. So it's either that the residents uh somehow think of, I am not being serviced on the basis of what's happening to my private way. I am being harmed by allowing new development to take place and road destruction to take place without any encumbrance of cost that the town should otherwise then have to come back and fix the road. And we can take pictures of what was before and what we have as the after. And it may be uh precedent setting, but the idea that um by the, by next spring, the whole one side of the road that I live on is going to be stripped of blacktop. It's didn't even have a roadbed of any consequence when it was put into place to begin with. So I I really want you not to, don't, don't think about what exists. Think about being precedent setting, because this is exactly what's happening for the places where this circumstance arises.
I I promise you, I will bear all of that in mind. There is also a separate statute that applies to when a town can make repairs, and I want to make it clear, it's repairs to a private way. We can snowplow because we need to be able to get in there for emergency access. We can, by bylaw, make repairs to public ways. But the town is not gonna be in any position to go in and, like you just said, with with one particular private way, that there's gonna be absolutely no asphalt remaining. The town cannot go in there and rebuild that roadway.
We do that now, though. They they do that now.
We don't, we don't. I don't think, anyway, let me, let me get, she's had her hand up for a while, but I Carolyn is soaking all this in, and and you're hearing that there is some difficulties in doing this, but.
I would go back now to 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 the um uh our homework that we are supposed to do for the twenty eighth and um just to understand where my baseline is of, you know, kind of from from where I um I have further ideas and just to understand is the the blasting, is is that something that um we can re- require people to come before the planning board and if they have to have any, you know, kind of alteration, um if they have anything in 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 mind. And that then does include blasting, is that something that they first come to us and 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 we hear it? Um or can they just straight go to um the fire department and say like, oh, here, I have got too much lead, I kinda let, let's blast it?
That's a good question. I, so in the amendment, the way I've written it, obviously, we have a special permit process if they're going to exceed a certain if they're going to blast surface ledge, exposed ledge as defined, yes, they're gonna come here for a special permit. I wrote something, and I have a little side note, you'll see, that obviously they have to get a fire department permit. They should be getting a building permit from the building commissioner. And, you know, like all our other bylaws, we rely on the building commissioner to tell people if they're gonna need a permit from us or not. But Carolyn will see this. Uh I've put in a provision that on this particular issue, we get a sign off, even if it's not meeting the thresholds for the special permit, so that we at least know what's going on. And I don't know if we can do that, but I remember back in my days in CONCON, we used to sign off on building permits, the commission. In those circumstances where one of the two conservation permits were not needed, so there are gonna be no hearings. Uh and it usually was just the chair would sign off on the building permits. All building permits came to the CONCON to look at, to make sure that a permit was not needed, and I'm envisioning that in the case where there's gonna be alteration of the physical characteristics of a lot, that maybe we should have something similar to that. And then when certain thresholds are ma- met, we have a permit process. And again, looking back to the example of CONCON, I don't know if CONCON still does that. I don't know if that's still a practice in town, but it was with the building commissioner thirty years ago. Um so, again, look at it, but again, we can't regulate everything and we can't stop everything. You know, and we have to keep that in mind. There's there's a fine line of where, how much a government can regulate the use of land and and private property owners' right to develop and use their land, and and we have to make sure, go as close to that line as we can, but we can't cross the line to simply say, no more. We just, we just, for example, if we took the rest of the open land in town and said, it's not R, A, B, and C anymore, we're gonna rezone it all open space. Well, we're gonna be compensating an awful lot of people to do that. Because right now, they have the right to develop the land, we'd be taking that away. We could do it, but we're gonna have to pay for it. That's the whole thing about land use regulation. Clark, last point.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion to adjourn or or say goodbye.
Alright, yeah, no, I think I think Carolyn heard our various views. I think that was very productive for her to hear that. And we'll see you on the twenty eighth. And we'll see you on the twenty eighth. Um so we have a second to the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, we'll call, alphabetical roll call in favor.
Who are I?
Tom, Carolyn and I.
Amy Glass, Mar, I.
Kevin Highnight.
And Bill, it's me, Beishai.
Great. Thank you, Carolyn and Cassandra. Thank you all for doing all this and I'll see you in a couple weeks.
Good night, everyone. Thanks. Good night, everyone.